Good morning. We'd like to welcome everybody to the Mesa City Council Study Session for February the 22nd. All of our council is present. The first item on our agenda for this meeting is to review the agenda for the February 26th council meeting. So, council, if you could please take a look at that. The first few items are, again, various liquor licenses and bingo applications, followed by purchase contracts. Item six is various resolutions. I do know that item 6C has been pulled from the consent agenda, and I think we might get a... we'll have a discussion and have a staff presentation on that, or have staff available to discuss that. Mr. Smith, anything you...
Yeah. And while Jeff comes up, why don't we want to clarify, uh, mayor and council, first. I wanted to clarify something. Last week, we had a discussion regarding the remedies, and there was a discussion that one of the remedies in the event of a breach would be payment of the bonds backed by ASU. And while we did talk to ASU about that some time ago, we failed to remember how that conversation resolved and actually what the remedy in the document provides. That type of remedy doesn't really work for ASU, and for real reasons, too, because, I'll state the obvious, they're obviously a public entity. And for a public entity to have the position of being terminated on an agreement, having to pay back bonds for another governmental entity, and then not even having the use of the facilities, really is not an acceptable position. It's obviously one we wouldn't want to be in. And so, we actually negotiated a different remedy, one that we think is really more tuned to what the intent of the contract is, and that is specific performance. And it works both ways. And that is, while the bonds are outstanding, they cannot leave. We can enforce that through specific performance. And in fact, if we breach the contract while bonds are outstanding, they cannot terminate the agreement. They can only seek specific performance back against us. So while the bonds are outstanding, the remedy is specific performance, a requirement that in fact, both parties have to perform and continue to perform, and that, you know, the building doesn't end up being empty is really what the goal is, as opposed to having bonds paid off and having an empty building. You require specific performance. And then after the bonds are paid off, we have the traditional sort of contract remedies, termination, and then the remedies that are available under law and equity. And so, those are sort of the traditional sort of contract damage provisions that you would see in other contracts. And so, that's the provisions that ASU agreed to and that we've also agreed to.
Okay. So, yeah, I do recall that conversation. And so, just to kind of dummy it down for folks, let's say, and I shouldn't have said dummy it down, but to put it in more practical terms. Five years, 10... 10 years into this agreement, ASU says, you know what? We're going a different direction, so the moving trucks are showing up tomorrow. It's a great building, we hope you find somebody else to use it. What's our response?
That, in fact, they, you know, if they did that, we'd say, no, you don't get that option. You get to stay with us for the remainder of the bond term. And if we have to, we could obviously go and file the lawsuit that's appropriate and enforce them to stay. And they'd still have to continue to meet all the minimum requirements that are in the contract until the bonds are paid off. And you see this, just, you know, the contact, the concept of specific performance, you see in contracts in which what you want is something very unique. It's not something that is easily articulable in a monetary damages sense. And so, specific performance is very common, for example, in the purchase of real estate and some other of our development agreements, because the purchase of land, you're trying to buy something that's very unique. If you breach the contract, you don't want money, you want to be able to buy that land. And so, you'll see specific performance virtually in almost every single real estate purchase agreement. You also see it in very many of the development agreements, because the remedy, what you want is something more than just a payment of money. You want that, you're actually contracting for something that's unique. And so, that's the same concept that's flowed through within this document also.
Okay. So, in other words, we agree not that neither one of us is going to part company prior to the termination of the lease agreement?
Exactly.
And if that does happen, then we'd have specific actual damages, and ASU would be responsible for those?
Right. After that, after that term, we have the traditional sort of, I'll call them traditional contract damages of termination, and those remedies that are at law and equity, the phrase law and equity is sort of traditional contract damages. I also point out one other thing, because we're still working on one provision within the agreement, because the lawyers keep looking at it, and that's sort of the problem. And that is, we, the current draft we have says the term of the agreement of the IGA is two years or until we enter into the first lease. The concept was that we would, we would take the IGA, once we enter into that first lease, we would draw down all the provisions that are within the IGA into the lease. Basically, then we'd have the one document in the lease, and the lease would carry forward. But as this becomes more, you know, we get more provisions, it's more robust, we're realizing we're having to draw down more provisions into that lease, and it's just simpler to keep the IGA operational for additional years as in case there's different phases with different leases. So, we're going to phase the IGA to be probably like five years, and as the phasing of the IGA goes, and it will go five years, and if we do another phase, it'll be another five years, another five years. So effectively, a 15-year IGA that, at least up to 15 years if we do all the phases, and if we don't do the phases, it'll be a five-year IGA. That way, at least on the drafting side for the lawyers, we don't have to, we don't have to have to pull all the provisions from the IGA into that first lease. It gives us more flexibility. So, we're just looking for drafting flexibility. So, you'll see that change probably, you know, as we make that change either today or over the weekend, and we'll have the final to you by Monday.
Okay.
And then we'll stop looking at it.
All right. Great. So, you indicated that the IGA will turn, will be replaced with a lease agreement?
Yes.
Okay. And so, should the negotiations break down at some point, and we're not able to reach an agreement on the terms of the lease agreement, then what is our obligation?
So, there's sort of multiple, and lawyers call them conditions precedent. There's sort of hoops or steps that we have to take before, before we continue forward. And if any of those we don't make, we, either party can terminate. It includes the lease itself, but it also includes other, the design plans agreeing on a budget. And if we don't agree upon those, then either side can just terminate the agreement. That's still in there.
Mayor, I'll give you an extreme example, which we hope not to replicate, but we entered into an MOU with the Cubs a year and a half before we concluded final negotiations on the actual dollar amounts and the lease amounts and all the terms. So, this is just, what we're asking council really is just the opportunity to take a framework and begin the negotiations for the detailed documents. And so, we will then obviously have to come back to council with the specifics on the financing, the dollar amounts, the master plan. What else might I have seen? Jeff?
The leases.
The leases. So, this is just the beginning, and this is how we, in all major negotiations, all major developments, the city's pursued, this has been the way we have initiated the discussions. We will have to spend some funding funds just to engage architects and design groups to help us to begin to kind of frame the cost of the, of the improvements. But this is, gives us that opportunity, knowing the council has seen this, and give us the green light that both parties can then move forward with significant commitments of resources to negotiate the various terms of the contracts.
Okay. Thank you. And Jeff, it's probably good to rehearse for us and for the public what some of the those, the high points of this agreement are. For example, this is for the construction of one building. There are specific performance benchmarks that ASU and the city have agreed need to be incorporated into that. If you can, I don't mean to stifle any questions, but Jeremy, do you have a question?
Just back to bonds before we get to topics.
The question I have, Jim, is so, you specifically said the term of the bond, and then you specifically referred to the term of the lease. So, are we talking about until the bonds are paid off or until the term of the lease? Which one is the, what's the timeframe for the breach of contract?
So, for the remedy of a specific performance, it's the term of the bond.
Okay. My concern with that is, like, let's take, for instance, the Cub Stadium that we built out, right? Like, so we bonded that out. We never necessarily paid off the bonds for Cub Stadium, but one of the things that we're looking to do is sell an asset, Pinal County, right? The water...
The land.
The land in Pinal County. So, if we pay off the bonds early, using another asset that the city owns, does that, how does that help? We hypothetically, let's say we pay the bonds off in one year because we sell another asset. It could put us in a position where we're not getting our money back out of ASU. Does that make sense?
Usually, when we sell bonds, we're, we may not necessarily be able to pay them off. The bond, when we sell the bonds typically, unless we have specific call dates, we can't just sell them off. We can take the dollars and reserve them and set them aside to be able to pay them off on paper, but not necessarily to the bondholders. But I think what we, I see your point is, you know, if we were to make an earlier payment on the bonds, earlier than the 20, 25 years that we typically have bonds outstanding, does that change this provision?
It would. So, it does create a disincentive to actually just, not just to escrow the funds for the payment of the bonds, which is what we frequently do, but to actually, actually do the call and pay them off, it does create a disincentive for us to do that. That's a fair comment.
It's just something we'd have to weigh. If we ever had that opportunity where we had, like you said, to sell some asset and we couldn't pay them off early, we'd have to discuss whether or not that may, that was something that would be the best interest of the city.
Yeah.
At this point, for the purposes of these agreements, we just assume it's going to be a 20 or 25-year payment of the bonds.
And why wouldn't we go with the term of the actual lease rather than the term of the bonds?
The leases.
99 years.
Yeah, 99 years. And for them to be able to commit, you know, from their perspective, they'll say, so you're going to lock us in on 99 years on some of those minimums that, you know, 40 years from now are...
And we don't want to, and we're not going to sell bonds at 99-year terms.
I know we're not going to sell bonds for 99-year terms, but it seems like if we're giving subsidized lease for 100 years, wouldn't we ask for something in return for the equivalent amount of time?
So, we still have, even after, even after the bonds are paid off, you know, we still have traditional contract damages. We can still terminate, we can sue for, for if they don't make a payment, we can sue to enforce that. Specific performance of this kind of nature to force an entity to sort of stay here, you can't leave, and you have to meet specific minimums, which means you have to have a certain number of professors and a certain number of students who's here, is a powerful remedy. And so, in their prior agreements, they have not given it, given that remedy to other entities with this level of specificity. So, we're the, we're the first ones to get this. And so, to even get it during the term of the bonds was significant.
Everybody continues after the bonds, too. There's, right, there's some obligations for them during the lease.
Remedies, right. The traditional contract remedies, right.
Great.
But not performance-based? Number of professors, number of students, et cetera?
Correct.
Remedies meaning to pay off the agreed lease, which is minimal in comparison of the 100...
Well, they still have to use it for also for prosecondary uses. In other words, they can't use it for some use that's not, not a permitted use. And so, it still has to be used for that use, but to meet the specific minimums, they wouldn't have to meet those specific minimums.
Okay. So, just, so, during the period of time that we have a mortgage to pay, there's an additional layer of protection that mandates ASU's performance, and it also mandates the performance benchmarks that we've talked about. After the debt is retired, we still have a, we're still a landlord-tenant relationship. ASU still has to pay rent and take care of the other obligations in the lease agreement. But that second layer of protection has been removed because we're no longer at risk for the debt obligation. So, Jeff, give us some highlights of this agreement, if you would, please.
Sure. Mayor, thanks for giving me a reason for sitting here for this time. Through the agreement, the city would be entering, through entering the IGA with the city, ASU would be committing to occupying a building of 100,000 to 125,000 square feet, bringing a minimum of 750 students, a minimum of 40 faculty and staff, as well as several yearly events related to film and media innovation and entrepreneurial support that they would hold either in their space or in a space provided by the city. From the city's side, the city would pay for all design and construction costs for that building. We would also develop the first phase of city center open space, which is approximately two-acre park space, as well as build out a first phase of the Mesa Innovation Studios, which is the second floor of the IT building. The IGA also has provisions for future phases, but it's important to note that those phases are, there's nothing that commits the city to those phases. It's just establishing some provisions today so that should the city want to move forward with the project in the future, we have that ability. Or if we don't, which is new in this IGA, it gives the, gives ASU the ability to choose to purchase, or choose to design and build those phases themselves. I will, since I, since Jim covered the remedies so well, I do only want to add one thing, and I think that that's important, is one of the main reasons that we're having the discussions with ASU to bring them here, is that they will help increase our level of activity in downtown. They will help us commercialize some of that innovation that comes out of that, out of that, those programs, and hopefully capture some of that in Mesa for economic development purposes. If our, if that is our goals with ASU, then, then having specific, specific performance rather than bond repayment actually is of greater benefit to us, because that means that what our stated goal is, is what we're actually after, and that's keeping ASU and the activities that come with ASU in our downtown. But I'm happy to...
Can you light up security?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. We went into, security was brought up last week as well, and I wanted to quickly address. We did have provisions in the IGA that we just didn't call out quickly. We have, through the lease, we will have to negotiate a security plan for the ASU building and the city center plaza itself. That plan will already, we have already agreed that it will show ASU sole responsibility to provide security for their building. What we will have to address is how the city and ASU interact and create the overall security for the entire block.
One other item that I'd like to mention also, that ASU has made a commitment as far as the innovation studio to commit a position...
Yes.
To help be part of the lead in helping us to determine the programming and the buildout of that innovation studio, along with helping us to attract private sector and possibly other nonprofit academic institutions to be part of the innovation studio also.
I've been contacted by some other higher education institutions that are interested in partnering in that space as well, but it's too early to spread details about it. But that, just so people know, we're talking about building a new building and then taking the existing IT building, which is adjacent to the council chambers, that has now become somewhat unused, because we've discovered that, well, as technology's progressed, it's no longer the best choice for us to have our own data center, but it's less expensive and more efficient to sub that out to the places. So now, we have a, an underutilized building that would sit adjacent to this new building. And Mr. Brady, give us a brief description of what the proposed use is for that building.
Yeah. So, obviously, we're still in some discussions, but one of the ideas that we think is very important as part of the innovation district concept is having a space, a collaborative space where technology can become hands-on for the students that will be not only attending ASU, but we were in conversations yesterday with Benedictine, we've talked to MCC, so, and also just the community at large, and having a space where the technology can be available for individuals to become and participate in. So, we're still trying, working with ASU and some of the other folks that the mayor's talked to about defining the types of technology, but, you know, as soon as we made this announcement about ASU coming to downtown, we had Boeing calling and saying, we want to be part of this. And there's a strong interest in their area to provide equipment, software, so that individuals can come and actually work on prototypes and have the experience of working in a space where they can be working on the same technology that Boeing uses in their own research and development, and because they see that as an opportunity to identify talent, to help kind of expand the exposure to the things that they're doing. So, we hope to make this kind of a workspace, innovation space, innovation studio is what was suggested, a collaborative space where that, where the community can work. We want to pull together, I'm working to pull together, again, as we said, ASU and Boeing and some other groups to come together and help us come back to council with maybe more specifics about what is the specific type of technology we would like to see here and how, what kind of equipment, and then building out. We have the second floor, which is, of all the floors, is probably in the best shape to occupy shortly, and we'd like to actually have that studio up and running within the year if possible, so that we have something that's ongoing even before the ASU academic building is built. We've imagined, you know, we talked about coding academies and maybe having like a K through 12 coding academy in the libraries, but what do you do for high school and post-high school opportunities and having space for that? So, we've got multiple floors over there, lots of space. Some of it's a little more available right now than others, so some rough areas that we'd have to work through, so, but it'll be a commitment, we'll have to come back to council. But initially, one of the things we want to talk about when we talk about, talk about the funding for the academic building is also including the cost for that first, or the second floor of the innovation studio and the civic center plaza. We'd all come, we'd all bring those back to council for consideration.
One other issue that we've had some discussions about since our meeting last Thursday, again, I would, this, this issue was provoked by, imagine Mesa, the top vote getting ideas saying, let's do, let's participate in an innovation district with an ASU as an anchor, but there was a caveat there, that it was always without a tax increase. And, and so, I know that we're not proposing a sales tax increase or anything else that would be tied to funding this, but we have talked about how, how then would, you know, there's no such thing as a free building, so how then do we pay for it? And the fact that this is, would be an anchor and an attractor for other utility customers to come to our downtown is, to me, fairly evident, but so, if we, by making that justification, say, well, then we can free up some money from utility revenues to pay for this building, to me, it's important that we talk to our utility customers and say, we're not going to just impose a tax on you in the form of utility rate increases to pay for this building. So, in, I'm looking forward to the negotiations going forward with ASU, but when we come back and we say, okay, it's going to cost X number of dollars, and the only way we can pay for that is, that's going to provoke a utility rate increase, to me, that's code for that's going to cause a tax increase. So, I'm anxious for us to have these discussions and for us to come back with a strong budget and for our city management to say, here's how we propose to pay for this, but I'm, I'm very hopeful that it's, this is not something that's going to, that staff is going to suggest in order to pay for this, here's the proposed rate increases. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, yes. Mayor, we have, I've been spending some time with all the utilities as well as with the budget office, and I think we're very close to bringing that to council. As I mentioned previously, we have experienced since the last time the council, we were in front of the council with utility funds and the enterprise funds, we have, and back a year ago, or maybe not quite a year ago in May, we outlined for the council, looking forward into the forecast, the anticipated rate increases that were necessary to sustain those enterprises going forward. And I, we, after giving, you know, going through this pretty carefully, we believe that because the anticipated growth, well, growth that has already occurred and anticipated growth, as well as savings and bond refinancing that we have both experienced and anticipate save, additional savings in the years to come, we anticipate that we would be able to absorb this additional cost without changing those rate schedules that were already shared with council previously. That doesn't mean that rates aren't going up. We talked about this previously, that there would be modest increases in some of the utilities, really related specifically to large capital improvements that are currently underway to help fund those. But we believe that there is capacity within the enterprise fund today through the savings in debt, as well as the large increases in both individual, individual meters for residential, but also having seen some significant industrial users come online, and we anticipate additional users that are, will be breaking ground soon, that they will be able to provide the additional dollars that we would be able to use to fund the improvements. Now, I say that cautiously, optimistically, because we still have to go through the exercise of scoping the entire project, but we, we will do that once we get the approval from council to do the, on Monday, if council gives us approval, we'll then go through the effort of beginning to find the scope and coming up with the budget for the improvements that will be funded out of the enterprise fund. And then I can come back and tell council, I have, you know, we have some dollars, some, an amount in mind, you know, that we think we could absorb on an annual basis, and hopefully that, those numbers will work together. But that's, that's how we're imagining this would be. But our goal is, through cost savings and both existing growth, larger than, than expected growth, that we'll be able to absorb these costs within the fund. And just to put it in perspective, I mean, today, the utilities provide a transfer to the general fund of over $108, $109 million a year. This would be a fraction of that cost on an annual basis. And that transfer is set at, an adjustment of a CPI of usually on inflation, 2 and 1/2, 3% maybe a year. The amount of increase in that, those dollars, over the next four or five years will be about the same amount that we would expect, the total amount that would be fixed for the project like this. So, it's a very small compare, amount that it would impact the overall budget. When you compare it to $108, $109 million that is currently being transferred out of the enterprise fund, it'll be, you know, less than 10% of that total amount. And that, we usually associate, well, as a transfer to the general fund in general, when we identify that, not specifically, but certainly, that is, that payment certainly helps to support public safety operations. And so, there is a large contribution coming out of the enterprise that already supports the majority of, a big portion of our public safety. This is, we've always allocated $5 to $6 million a year to support economic development investments out of the enterprise fund, and this would be a long-term commitment to do the same.
So, for the last few years, we've been doing that, allocating some money from this fund for economic development purposes, again, to try to grow the utility service area so that we have more customers, generate more revenue. And for example, we use, this is the model that we use on the Ben U buildout and on the Center for Higher Education buildout, very similar to the ASU building.
Absolutely. It's the exact same model that we use. And because of, we're limited, by only using, by using enterprise fund versus what we had before, I think that's important for folks to understand, is that there is a big difference between what was proposed now than what was anticipated with the sales tax. We have scaled this down significantly from what was originally anticipated. So, both ASU and the city have come, had to come back and reduce the scope of this significantly, and that's why you heard Jeff talk about the fact that future buildings that may be contemplated in the previous agreement were the obligation of the city. Now, we have the choice if we decide to fund those, but if not, ASU would be in a position, or they would also have the option to build out those buildings. So, there's no certainty about those future buildings, whereas in the previous agreement, those were part of our obligation to build out.
Thank you. So, obviously, breaking even on this, on this proposal would be great, but it's a lot of work, so it'd be nice to actually make money on this. The last, the last week, when we had this discussion, you indicated that the economic impact study that had been done previously a year or two ago still was applicable to this situation. We just had to tweak the numbers a bit. Remind us what the anticipate, per that study, what the economic gains for the area would be?
So, when the original study was done three years ago, two and a half years ago, it anticipated the full buildout of all the buildings that were going to be funded by the sales tax. I don't know what the total square footage was, Jeff, but the, the impact was about $5 billion.
Yeah, it's 100, it's for 180,000 square feet.
Right. And so, this anticipated building would be, singular building is...
100 to 125,000.
Yeah. We, and just kind of being...
But, repeat it. Previous, the previous IGA anticipated two phases of at least 180,000 square feet. There is additional phases that was built in, that were built into that, that I think took it to a total around 220,000 square feet.
Right.
This time around, we're talking about one building, approximately 100 to 125,000 square feet.
So, in comparison, the last IGA was 106 million, so I'm assuming we're talking somewhere in the realm of $53 million, given the size difference?
The last, the last IGA actually had greater responsibilities on the city's part. Not only was it building the park, but it was beyond just the first phase of the park. So, we were looking at the actual entire buildout of the entire city center as it's shown on the site plan here versus just a first phase of two acres. We also anticipate, I think, greater infrastructure improvements, streetscape improvements around, around this block. So, there, there was probably some cost built into that estimate that aren't being included in this scope.
We had parking, and I think the number was close to $150 million total.
Do you have a ballpark figure?
150 million, last time. 150 million, last time. Oh, this time?
Yeah.
Oh, so we, we anticipate it'll be less than half of that.
Less than?
Of the 150, of the 150,000, 150 million, sorry.
So somewhere less than 75 million is what we're talking about right now?
Probably 60 to 70.
Just ballpark?
Yeah, I think somewhere around there.
Okay.
Yeah. It's probably, we saw, yes, I think that's a fair number. That's the number, that's a ballpark range of where we're, so.
And so this is about half the size of that and the?
Oh, right, sorry, mayor. So yeah, so with that, and then just kind of also being, taking a conservative review of some of the kind of multipliers that were assumed in there, you know, I think we've come back and said, you know, it's not $5 billion, but I think we would reasonably believe that the, with the investment that's anticipated to take place, because the potential for investment with all the vacant property we have and underutilized properties that we have in Mesa, or downtown Mesa, we believe that number could be closer to a billion dollars.
So half of five is more than a billion, but conservatively, you?
Something we would say, we would probably hold up would be a billion.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
And one of the reasons I asked this to be pulled from the agenda, from the consent agenda is, is for just this reason. You know, we're finding out a little more each week about how this is going to be funded, or what it's, what we're doing, or how it's going to work. And we haven't really had a chance as a council to really sit down and vet this whole project out from day one. You know, it's, things are sprung on us here and there where we find out by asking questions. And, and I thought it was time for council really to sit down as a, as a group and talk this through and identify what is it that we're wanting as a council? What do we want for our city and for our, our community? And how do, you know, what, what do we want to provide, Chris, to go forward, to negotiate on our behalf? This really isn't a negotiation between, you know, Chris Brady and ASU. This is a negotiation between the city of Mesa and ASU. And we need to make sure as a council that we're supportive and that we all agree on the direction that we want to hit. On top of that, I still have concerns over the cost, because, especially if we're using, you know, somewhere less than 75 million dollars, I, there's, we have a lot of needs still in our community, and we haven't even had our strategic planning session yet to identify those needs. But I can tell you right off the bat, three needs that I know for sure is, is a, or four needs, is a fire station and council member Freeman's district, a, a fire station in my district, a library in my district, and a police station in council member Luna's district. And, and that, you know, for 60 million dollars, we could probably build, you know, three out of the four of those. And so, you know, I, I, I struggle with this. I think it can be a game changer for our downtown, but again, I think it's up to council to, to set the direction and give the direction to, to Mr. Brady on which direction to go to negotiate on our behalf. And then we also need to, I think, wait until we have our strategic planning session to understand exactly what we're dealing with and what our costs are going to be. To me, this is just moving way too fast. We learn a little bit each week of what we're, what we're up against, and, and I still don't think all the, all the questions are answered. So for me, I'd rather, you know, take this completely off the agenda, let's have a discussion about it, maybe even talk about it in our strategic planning session, and then bring it back forward, if we want to go forward with it then.
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
So Mr. Brady, as we enter the MOU, we have ample opportunity to, to vet this out further. So in entering into this MOU will give us the opportunity, whether we have questions or not, we have ample time to submit any concerns that we might have as we negotiate this process. Is that correct?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
I have a question on that as well. What is it exactly that we're approving on Monday? Just for you to talk to ASU, like what exactly are obligations at this point?
Well, it's, it's the IGA. So that's the document that was loaded into the legislature. It's, you know, it's, in many ways, it's very similar to MOU. It's somewhere between an MOU and the agreement. It's, it's, but it has a lot of provisions that say that obviously either party can back out because there's so many different, as I call them, you can call them conditions precedent, that's what the lawyers think of them, but there, there are additional steps that have to be taken over the next, really probably over the next six months, next year, before we enter into that first lease to decide to actually go forward with the, the project.
This is actually the contract that's saying we're moving forward. This isn't just to give you permission to go talk to the Board of Regents, like this is actually saying we're doing this.
So in big, large developments like this, every group wants to have some level of kind of framework about what the discussion's going to entail. And so this begins to kind of outline that framework, but it doesn't create a specific obligation. It just says, here's what we're, here's how, what we're imagining the framework of our relationship is going to look like going forward. So before we go spend even more resources in bringing in outside resources to assist us with this, everybody kind of understands this is the map that we're going to follow. But at any time during this conversation, and as, you know, the city attorney just mentioned, we can withdraw if, if council says, you know, this isn't going to work for us, it's for whatever, you know, whether it's the cost or the, the relationship, we can withdraw from that, and there's no other obligations at that time. You know, in, in every IGA and every MOU, you know, we've done some that have been very broad and specific, just saying, we're going to sit down and have a conversation, kind of like what you heard last week on the, the, the parking lot. You know, it's just a very broad, we're going to sit down and start having a conversation so that everybody knows that we're in exclusive conversations with a particular developer. Here, we're saying, we're going to sit down with ASU, here's the site. It's probably gotten into more detail because we couldn't keep the attorneys out of the room, so it got a lot more detailed on it. But a lot of times it can vary, but really for us is this is the beginning of the conversation and the negotiations going forward.
Thank you. Chris?
Quick question. Would we be able to change the size and scope of the buildings and/or the project if we enter into this IGA? Or is it limited to what is actually written in the IGA?
I think we, if conversations with ASU, I mean, again, they would have, if they would agree to any changes to that, we can have those conversations with.
Would they be open to that, or is that just a non-starter, is what's on the?
What's the specific, I don't know what the?
So if we decide that we wanted to hypothetically say, instead of doing the Innovation Center in the IT building, give ASU that IT building and do the Innovation Center at 51 East Main, would they be open to something like that, or is that a deal killer?
I, I'd have to ask them. Everything from the beginning, everything from the beginning has been to be, to have a new building of 100,000 square feet.
I'd like to know that or not.
The IT building is only 30,000.
18,000.
18,000, so it's just, I think it was the size of the building had something to do with that.
If I can weigh in quickly, Mayor and Councilman Glover, the IGA does have provisions in there that say, state that the site plan that you see on your screen now, that the, essentially those, it's, I don't want to say conceptual, but that this is our best guess at this point. Not until we get to the point where we're talking about the initial project budget, the overall project budget, do we really get to set what that scope is. So there is that potential, if, if we agree to a project budget, then we get into the design, and the design doesn't, doesn't support the budget, that we may have to scale the building down. I'll let Rick answer as to, you know, if things shuffle around, if we move Innovation Studios from one building to next, whether that would be something ASU would be open to.
Welcome, Rick Maymark from ASU.
I think there's a button on there. Good morning. Thank you for having me here again. Mayor, council members, just to try to answer your question, Councilman Glover, if you have an innovation center, a small innovation center by itself, I think the Brookings study made it very clear that, that without sort of the critical mass of, you know, students and faculty connected to a research institution, it's much harder to make that a successful endeavor. That being said, this building size that is on here, while there's a range, and I totally agree with what Jeff said, if it costs three times as much, we're going to have to scale as we think. We might have to scale it back a little bit. But we can't bring the academic programs that I described last week without a critical mass that's going to be here. And as you heard earlier, the, the plan that was before the voters was about two times this, and that is ultimately where we'd like to be, whether it's city resources, our resources, or some combination thereof. But to shrink the building below the range that we're talking about and use, just reusing the building next door and the building across the street, we're not going to get the square footage that we need to deliver the academic and research program that's going to be the engine that will help the innovation district succeed. And so if we get, if we get much smaller than the footprint we're talking about, it, we just can't, I don't, I don't think we can succeed, and I don't think we would make the decision to come if we can't succeed. So I, you know, it really depends on, on the size and availability of buildings. The other thing I just want to mention is the facilities we're talking about are quite unique in nature. Some of you have seen facilities like this, you know, big sort of high ceiling facilities that have motion capture and cameras and things like that in there. So it would be extremely hard to retrofit a small office building with normal ceiling heights to that kind of use.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Rick, for your comments. You know, I, I'd like to move forward in this MOU process to see where it goes and see what happens, so we'll have time to vet it out even more. I've received numerous emails from constituents in my district in support of this, and I'd like to, I do have some additional questions and concerns, but I think they can be worked out in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. I echo what Mr. Freeman says on that. And I, I agree that we, we do have a strategic planning meeting coming up, is it a week from Monday? And, and we certainly don't want to put the cart in front of the horse, but I think in order for us to have an intelligent conversation to take this to the next level, we need to, to take it to the next level and, and look at the numbers. If we, if we come back and find out, man, construction costs have gone sky high, and I know they have in, in recent, over the last year, and we can no longer do this building in, in a way that's not going to raise utility rates, then, and that's, that's significant to me, and we do need to just start from scratch and say, well, maybe this isn't what we thought it was. But I think we have, you know, several bites at the apple before, you know, a crane shows up next door and we, we start doing this. So I, I would suggest that we, we, absolutely, we talk about it at the strategic planning meeting next week, but that we go forward on Monday to allow this to progress to the point that we get some numbers, that we have something intelligent to talk about. I think it is important for us to reiterate to everyone that this is not, we're, if we did this, it wouldn't, we wouldn't be choosing to do this instead of supporting public safety, or instead of doing other things that are critical to our mission as, as a government. This is not an either or situation. The big cities, cities of half a million people and 4,000-plus employees can do more than one thing at a time, and we can address more than one problem at a time. So nothing that, that we've said today, I think, I hope, and no one construes it as, well, we'll, we'll shortchange public safety, or we'll shortchange something else in order to do this. That's, that's another non-starter for me, and I'm sure that's true for every member of this council. Absolutely, we're going to pursue and build the police stations and the fire stations that need to be built. I don't think at any time we have underfunded public safety in the past, and we never will going forward. So that's another deal killer, I think, for all of us, or at least it is for me. So, yes, Mr. Thompson?
Well, and just to be clear, it wasn't, I wasn't saying it was an if or an or. My comment was really geared towards if we have this plethora of money sitting aside, then why do we, why should we go out for a public safety bond that will impact the citizens' secondary property tax and add more debt to our city, or to our citizens if we have the money set aside right now that we could utilize to, to build these structures?
Fair point. So I, I think where we're at right now, I'm sorry, Mr. Whitaker?
No, I, um, also, we're asked, are we being asked to approve this without an actual price tag? I guess that's the part that I'm not.
Mr. Brady?
Yeah, well, that's what we're asking, is to allow us to move forward so we can come up with a price to bring back to you, because we haven't engaged architects or design groups, we haven't spent all the time deciding on the exact square footage, and it's not only the building, but it's the plaza. We have to look at utility issues of bringing broadband fiber in. So we want to, we want to put all those pieces together, and that's what this agreement actually requires us to do, is to come up with a master plan, come up with the design component of the building, and bring back those costs.
That's fine. I just want to confirm that, like, when, if we approve this on Monday, that, that doesn't mean like, the, like, it's, it's coming back to council for approval, that you can confirm?
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and the other point that, you know, I really want to make is that we can't, we can't pretend like, like if we want to move forward with the ASU project, then, then that's fine, but we really only have two sources of revenue, sales tax, our utilities, and the third one would be the secondary property tax for general obligation bonds. But I, I think it's a bit disingenuous to say that this doesn't raise taxes. Like, if we want to move forward with this project, then fine, let's move forward with this project, but to make it with a statement that this doesn't raise taxes, or doesn't raise utility rates, it's just not, it's not a fair statement to make. And that's the only point that I want to make, that we can't push this and say, well, the money just comes out of thin air and doesn't cost anybody anything. This, this whole concept of creating economic activity of billions of dollars, that's great, and that's what we all want on the growth downtown, but at the end of the day, that money doesn't funnel back to the citizens that are paying the utility bills, and this doesn't funnel back to our burden of, of sales tax debt. Like, those numbers aren't, there's no trajectory that I'm looking at from a financial statement that those numbers are going down. That's the only point that I want to make.
Okay. Thank you. I, I think I agree with you.
And, and one last, if, if we're talking $75 million spread across 750 students, that's like roughly the cost of $100,000 per student that we're bringing down to downtown Mesa. To me, that sounds a bit, like, why don't we just take $100,000 and create a lottery for the people downtown and give away $100,000 to 750 people, and then tell them they have to spend that money in downtown Mesa? And we'll see direct economic impact right away, you know? It's $100,000 per student that we're paying to bring to downtown Mesa. Like, just wrap our heads around that for a second. $100,000 per student that we're bringing.
Well, that's a, that's a sobering statistic. I, I grant you. Let me take issue with something you said earlier, though. I think that, I think this, part of the reason that we have in the past allocated $5 million or so into an economic development account from our utility revenues is to spur additional development of our utilities, particularly in the downtown, where we provide all of the services, including electricity. That is a major source of revenue for our city. I think the decision was made back in 1945, if, correct me if I'm wrong, our city council abolished the, the primary property tax and instead purchased the remaining utilities and, and adopted the philosophy, we're going to pay for government through utilities. And so we are, like it or not, that is the model that we follow. We are in the utility business, and so to, to do that successfully, we need to go out and recruit utility customers. Right now, our downtown is underperforming in terms of providing revenue from utilities. It, it can do more. And bringing an anchor like ASU to our downtown is going to, people are going to want to build buildings next to this building, and the ripple effect, I, I look forward to hearing from the development community and the other higher education providers that are going to talk about the, the attractiveness of having ASU here. So I, I would take issue with, I think this is going to raise utility revenues because of the economic impact it's going to have, not just in our downtown, but throughout the city.
But it's never going to raise them enough to actually pay for itself, right? Like, the citizens that pay those utilities are still absorbing the costs. Is it still a net loss to the people that actually pay those utility bills?
I think there will be initially, probably, it'll take a while for this to kick in, but I, I go back to the experience that we've had in providing infrastructure and utilities out in the, in Mr. Thompson's part of town in District 6. I lived through that in the 1990s, when this council was harshly criticized for throwing millions of dollars out at the, in the, in the gateway area. And literally back then, it was an airport surrounded by desert, and folks who lived in West Mesa said, why are we spending millions of dollars to create an asset that is never going to provide any benefit to us? Now, 25 years later, you know, every couple of months, a business is moving in out there that's providing, literally, when, when a, when a data center moves in next to Apple, the sales tax on the electricity alone is a million dollars a year to the city's utility budget, or not to the utility budget, to our general fund, because we don't provide the electricity, solid product does, but we tax the electricity. Downtown, the, the impact is even more substantial.
Water, Mayor, we provide water to those large companies.
So this is a long play. This is something that, and the other thing I like about this is this is an asset, this is not something we buy that then, five years from now, or 20 years from now, when someone retires, is gone. This is something that our children and grandchildren and great-grandchildren will be walking in and out of this building. This will permanently be a fixture in our downtown that will be paying dividends, not just over the life of a 20- or 25-year bond, but in perpetuity, for the, for the, as long as Mesa is Mesa, this will be generating revenue for our residents, and it will. is Mesa, this will be generating revenue for our residents and it will be providing utility revenue and attracting other utility users to come to our downtown. So Jeremy, I agree 100%. We need to scrutinize the economics of this. I am, however, I think it's going to, particularly when we look at things like the economic impact statement that say, we're going to have a billion dollars in economic activity in downtown over the course of 10 years. That's significant and so you're asking all the right questions and I'm not suggesting, I'm saying we need to have these conversations two or three more times as this comes back to us after the construction figures are determined and the lease agreements being negotiated. And as these numbers come more clear, we'll be able to have more intelligent conversations on that specific issue of the economic return.
I have a few questions for CFO Mike. Are you available for a second? When you gauge the financial health of the city, what number do you use in your opinion? What is it that you're looking for?
So, excuse me, Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, we look at a variety of metrics. We consistently look at our debt ratios, our debt, you know, our percentage of the statutory limit, compare that to other cities. We look at our average household rates and we look at that for the city. We look at our per capita debt and so we look at a variety of metrics.
What would you say is the one number that you look at? Like, in the equivalent world of a private entity, right? Like, so the book value of a private entity determine the true, like, all the assets minus liabilities? What do you look at from the city's perspective to determine that?
So...
Like, the net position?
Yeah.
I mean, when I read the comprehensive annual financial report, it's the, at the end of the day, it's the net position that defines the true value of the city, right? You've sold off all your assets and you paid all your liabilities. It's your net position that determines...
I would disagree with that in that the net position looks at a lot of accounting rules and conservatism that is built into the accounting rules and the net position is the result of those and how we report those.
Would you say that the trajectory of the net position, though, determines the financial health of the city? Like, if the trajectory of the net position is going up, the financial health of the city is getting better? And if the trajectory is going down, that it's getting worse?
I wouldn't say that necessarily because change in rules affects the net position quite a bit. For example, you know, four years ago, we saw a drop in our net position almost 50% because of the change in rules. Wasn't because of the performance of the city of Mesa, it was a change in rules.
Sure. So if you take those gap rules out, the ones that force you to take that 50% discount because of the unfunded pension liability, I'm assuming that's what you're referring to?
That's right.
And if you take those out, is the trajectory still going up or is it going down if the rules weren't accounted for?
Yeah. I think we've seen a slight decrease in that position, but again, that's, you know, that's a variety of factors that have built into there. So, for example, we've seen our debt increase a little bit and that's caused some of that net position to go down. We've seen a variety of other things that have changed as well and we're in a different cycle as a city as well. So, there's just a variety of factors that are built into the net position number that you discuss.
From a council perspective, I guess the question that I have, if there's no number that can determine the financial health of the city that we can analyze, what is it that you suggest that we look at to determine how healthy this city is doing from a financial perspective?
Yeah, I mean, there's, like I said, there's a variety of metrics we need to focus on. We look at the sales tax increase, we look at, you know, the growth in businesses and jobs.
Tax base.
Yeah, the tax base is growing, our assessment of value, there's, we can, you know, we can discuss a lot of different metrics that we can look at, a variety of metrics.
But you wouldn't agree at the end of the day that eventually that boils down to the net position of the city?
No, the net position, again, is kind of an artificial number that, based on the accounting laws that we come up with.
How do you determine when the city's out of money? Like, what would you say municipality becomes bankrupt?
Yeah, when they can, when they can no longer pay their debt.
Which, to some extent, your net position is going to help define that number, right? If you sold off all your assets to pay your liabilities. How else would you define that number?
Well, let me tell, let me tell you real quick about the net position. The net position takes all your future liabilities, values them today, it doesn't, it doesn't take into account all your future, you know, tax receipts. And so that's just another example of conservatism in accounting, which I'm not disagreeing with, but that's just one of the rules. So it's like, it's, for example, saying, I'm bankrupt because I can't pay off my mortgage today. That's an example of how accounting treats that. It doesn't account for, you know, in the future, I'll be able to earn a paycheck and pay off those mortgage payments.
Through some form of increased, going back to your point of mortgage, you can make more money, something that, and the equivalent on the city's side is either raising sales tax or raising utility.
No, our accounting books don't account for that future revenue regardless of whether you raise your rates or not. So what we raise in sales tax next year isn't a receivable on the books today, whereas our pension liability for the entire future is on our books today valued. Everything we have to pay for the next 30 years is on our books, the value of that today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council. Any other comments or questions on this item? We do have one request to speak. It's a little different because this is on our agenda for Monday and we're just reviewing Monday's agenda, but Mr. Scannaberry, why don't you come forward? Robert Scannaberry is asked to speak. Mr. Scannaberry, welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you.
Yes, right there.
Mayor, Council, thank you for the time. This just seems like it's going way fast. Once it became public where I was hearing about it, so I really appreciate Mr. Whitaker, Mr. Thompson slowing the thing, putting a parachute on a little bit and having the discussion. So my first concern was that it was just going to breeze right on through and we weren't going to talk about it, so I'm really thrilled to see the process. Mayor, you, I wasn't going to say anything, but when you said that we've never underfunded public safety, that just, my heart sank and I got a pit in my stomach and I think we really have. And the first is when we tried to put ASU on the sales tax for public safety and combined it and that didn't pass. I think the reason that didn't pass was because ASU was attached to it and it was piggybacked on the money for public safety. We would be in a much better situation for public safety right now if we'd not done that before. And kind of going with the we, the people, we, the people voted and said, no. And it's tax dollars no matter what. I've heard, I can't even remember who said it, but the tax dollars coming from one place or another are still tax dollars. When I was a young man and I didn't understand things as well, in California, we talked about getting the lottery and when we got the lottery, we're going to fix all the school financial problems. My understanding of how that went down is we got, let's say, $50 million more and the general fund just shrunk by $50 million on the other side. So it goes to my same concern for, I don't know how many people pay city utilities, all city utilities. I do. I live right at McDonald and University and I pay utilities. I've been meeting with a lot of people on the corporate commission and people running for corporate commission and something that really hit true was they're calling for the other APS, Salt River, all that to reduce with some of the tax savings that they're seeing, they're looking for rate reductions. So if we're holding true and if our rates are somewhere near theirs, great, but if later this year they all reduce them and we're relying on that money coming in from our utilities and we're set at a higher rate than the other utilities, we're going to kind of look foolish. Just going to take a look at my notes real quick. I get a little, I'm really curious to find out now what the profit margins are for our utilities, where we can absorb those kind of things because I think I could be paying a lot less rate if we're doing so well to fund other departments, which PD is close to my heart and I want us funded, but maybe we shouldn't be funded from utilities, maybe we should be directly funded through the general fund. I think our citizens are looking for no public money. I love ASU. I'd love to see some competition. I like competition. I'd like to see a bunch of schools come down here. I'd like them to come here because we provide good services, we have good infrastructure and that we have support for them, but I get really concerned, I don't think that government are good developers. I think private sector are good developers and when we start developing and building out and we're doing it, I don't think that's the service that we're actually here to Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Scannaberry. Your time's up.
Oh, thank you.
Again, this will be on our agenda again Monday, so if you have more to say, please feel free to pull a blue card then and we'll have another three minutes for you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for having us, you guys, too.
Thank you very much. Yes, Jeremy?
The last thing that I want to point out on the IGA is, one of the bullet points that I was reading through last night is ASU will work in good faith, provide scholarship opportunities for Mesa residents. And I'll digress on the fact that I believe this increases our water rates, but the issue that I mainly take with the fact that this increases our utility rates is it hits the poorest people in our community, right? The people that live paycheck to paycheck. If their utility rates go up, that truly impacts those people. And my question, or I guess not my question, but like, as you guys move forward with this IGA, like, I think one of the things that definitely needs to be addressed is to take the median income in the city of Mesa, which I think somewhere sits $31,000 a year, somebody...
I think it's 47.
Regardless.
47?
Household income. Regardless, if we could just take the median income and make sure that, you know, I would hope that ASU would take fact to the point that, you know, what types of opportunities are being provided to these people who, whether we agree or not, are being adversely affected by increased rates? And I would say, like, for ASU to find in your heart and your passion to say, what is it that we're doing to provide services or scholarship opportunities? Because to me, that one statement, just to work in good faith is a, I don't even know what that means. I don't even know if that's legally enforceable, but I know ASU has done some great things in the past, so I would just hope that you guys would consider the impact that it's going to have on those individuals.
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
You know, we know that education's the greatest equalizer, so I would hope that perhaps we might want to work with our surrounding school districts, Mesa Public Schools as well as Gilbert Schools and Queen Creek Schools as we go through this process. I agree that I think the scholarship opportunity is a wonderful opportunity for our, especially our individuals that really, really need it. So as you proceed, let's make sure that we include them in some kind of agreement to provide those opportunities for that.
Thank you, and I hope I don't embarrass, yes, I'm sorry.
Just, you know, I think this discussion illustrates how we need more details and that's why I support moving forward with the IGA to figure out those details. I think we have a good partner in ASU and we can work with them to figure out those details and move forward and to figure out what are some of the gaps that, you know, what Jeremy alluded to, you know, what we can figure out to support our residents here in the downtown, figure out programs on how we can support our utility payments. I know we have a summer utility program that we assist with low-income individuals, their utility payments. Maybe we can figure out something for them during this process. So I think we need more details and that's why I support moving forward with this IGA to figure out those details on how we support, you know, residents, how do we, you know, this is not, like the mayor mentioned, either/or on public safety, how do we, how do we look at those costs and including more development in downtown? How do we look at cost for public safety as well? Part of the formula moving forward. So I think it's a great discussion, but I think we should move forward to figure out those details and see where we can fill in those gaps that I mentioned, so.
Thank you. Again, this is on our agenda for Monday, so we'll have more discussion and we'll take action on Monday. But so, if there's, I don't want to cut anybody else off, nothing more. Mr. Namrock, I appreciated the comment that was made a moment earlier. I think ASU has traditionally been a very good neighbor to the places that it locates and so I encourage you and Jeff to look for as many opportunities as we can to take advantage of the good faith of ASU. I know we're on a similar mission. You're here to bring services to our community and to raise the educational attainment in our community and it's a noble cause and so this is not a for-profit, it's not a company that's coming in to take advantage of our city. This is someone that's coming to assist us in our mission of serving our citizens, so. But I think to that end, let's look for every opportunity for ASU to demonstrate that goodwill and to be good neighbors as we work out the details of this agreement. Thank you very much. So, an hour ago, we started reviewing our agenda for Monday's meeting. We're now on Agenda Item 6C. Any other moving forward? Anything else on Agenda Item 6 or 7? And 8 is various subdivision plats. We do have some items, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Luna.
As I know, maybe I'm jumping ahead, Item 10 is the introduction of the ordinance for the rezoning of East Thomas Road and Racker. I just wanted to put it on record that I will not be supporting that as it moves forward. I know that the public hearing is set for March 5th and, but just wanted to put it on record that I will not be supporting that.
Agenda Item 10A.
Agenda Number 10A.
I think Mr. Luna indicated he's not going to be voting in favor of Agenda Item 10A and I understand your rationale. This was a, discussed in great detail at our P&amp;Z meeting. Staff has recommended denial and so I, too, will be taking a serious look at whether or not I want to, whether I think there's a good reason to go forward or not on Agenda Item 10A. So currently, the items that are off the consent are 6A, 9A, there'll be a public hearing, 10A is a potential public, a setting, something for a zoning case for a public hearing. Yes?
Thompson, are you still interested in pulling? Are you okay? Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns for the agenda? Mr. Freeman?
9A is pulled off.
Well, I'm sorry, 9A is on the, is off the consent agenda. So I'm just, I was just rehearsing the things that we're going to talk about on Monday. So 6A, 9A, 10A are off. Everything else is still on. Right? Okay, thank you. The next agenda item for this meeting is to hear a presentation and provide direction on staff recommendations for opportunity zone designations in Mesa. Welcome, Mr. Djiboutiak and Ms. Hornson.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. We'll try to move this along fairly quickly here. Sarah and I have been working in the last week about a new economic development tool, new federal program that we sent information out to you last Thursday on as well. So we want to make sure we get this in front of you as we are facing a deadline to submit to the state and the governor actually makes a recommendation, so we're going to cover that in some detail. So let me get into a little bit about what opportunity zones are all about. It's a new program established here in December with the tax cuts and the Jobs Act of 2017. Again, it's to encourage long-term investments in those census tracts. It really provides a deferral or elimination of taxes on capital gains. So the U.S. Treasury has put forth some very specific rules and regulations on those and Sarah's going to get into those here in just a minute, but again, it's the governor. We make a recommendation to the governor's office, working with ACA. They will actually, by March 22nd, make a determination and he has an option to extend that for as much as 30 days as well. Some of the specific benefits that are up there, again, new program, it's private investors to support distressed areas through private equity investment in businesses and real estate ventures in these opportunity zones. So as previously mentioned, it's through that deferral and reduction of potential certain federal capital gains. There's an item I really want to read here. It's estimated that U.S. investors currently hold $2 trillion in unrealized capital gains in stocks and mutual funds alone. That's a significant amount of untapped resources for economic development purposes. So the model is, again, a broader array of equity fund managers and other investors to pool resources, increase their investments in these areas. After 10 years, if they hold that investment for 10 years, you actually have no tax or tax-free on that capital gain side. So there's a lot of detail yet to come. ACA and the Treasury's a little slow getting information out to us on the regulatory side, but we're trying to be responsive with all that at the same time. Sarah, go ahead.
So as Bill mentioned, this program uses low-income census tracts to determine eligibility. Based on this criteria, 669 of Arizona's 1,526 census tracts qualify, but again, Governor Ducey, he can only nominate 25% of those 669. That equates to 168 tracts statewide. So the ACA has been working with the governor's office to proportionately allocate those 168 per jurisdiction and for Mesa, that means we may recommend up to 12 qualified tracts. Additionally, there is a contiguous provision within the act that allows states to nominate 5% of tracts that don't automatically qualify as long as the tract is contiguous to a qualifying tract and also has a medium family income that does not exceed 125% of that qualifying adjacent tract. Arizona can only nominate nine of these total and for Mesa, we are only able to recommend one of these tracts. So they're very selective, just because we recommend it does not mean that it will receive the designation ultimately. And just to summarize, Mesa can recommend 12 qualifying tracts and then one extra contiguous tract to receive the opportunity zone designation. and then one extra contiguous tract to receive the Opportunity Zone designation. So Mesa has a total of 123 census tracts shown on the map above. The light blue shading depicts the tracts that are eligible to receive this Opportunity Zone designation. Mesa has a total of 57 eligible tracts, but remember, we can only select 12 of the 57. The tan shading depicts tracts that are not eligible. And the red shading shows which tracts would qualify for that contiguous provision. So they didn't automatically qualify, but we may pick one of them to submit.
Okay, so what's in front of you? And you have a large copy of this in front of you as well to refer to. These are the 12 tracts in green that we've recommended. Now, when we review all the census tracts, they're really primed... What areas are primed to receive private investment, additional economic development activity? How does it coincide with some of our programs we already have in place? And where can we expect job growth? So we looked at, where is our redevelopment areas? What is our light rail corridor? We've managed to actually hit with this four of our five employment areas, which I think is important for us as well. Now, let me get to specifics. If you start on the western edge of the city, you can see following the light rail between, obviously, University and Broadway from the Tempe Canal going east all the way to Gilbert Road, we've recommended those census tracts. As we step down then to the Fiesta Mall area. Let me just quickly. The Fiesta Mall is a brown shaded area. We have recommended the parcel to the east. That's roughly the area bordered by Alma School, Southern Country Club, and all the way down to baseline. Really, we're trying to establish, how can we get additional investment in the Mesa Financial Plaza? What's the Mesa Fiesta Center as well, where the old Best Buy used to be? We have also made a conscious decision to not include the parcel to northwest corner of Southern and Alma School. Now, we have a proposal that's in. It's in John's Planning Shop. So if we have that investment going on now, we're limited to 12. So we'd made the decision to not recommend that parcel at this time, or that census tract, to be clear. So then, heading north from there, we went up and picked up the large tract up at Falcon Field to really encourage the development or continue to encourage the development. There's starting to see in that area, there's still a lot of room to go. The southeastern portion of the city, we're recommending two big census tracts that are down in the whole southeast corner. And then our one contiguous track, which is then outlined in purple, represents that one that we can designate of the nine, that the governor can designate. But really, we're trying to grow on the tech corridor. We've seen a lot of interest, lost some success. There's more primes in there. How do we now keep that going? That is the Elliott Road. The north side of Elliott Road is where that area represents. So to wrap this up a little bit, must select 12, plus the one contiguous. We have to turn those in by tomorrow. The governor will work with ACA to further evaluate those recommendations. And as you'll see, March 22nd is the deadline, is there on the screen. And with that being said, we're looking for your concurrence on our census tract recommendations. Questions?
Thank you. I have had the opportunity to talk with Bill and to review the rationale behind, you know, why these are green and blue. And I concur with the priorities that it'd be nice to have this great tool on all of the eligible tracts, but you have to, at some point, decide what are the 12 that you're going to be strategic about. And I think our economic development folks have done a good job of targeting these in the areas where... That both need development, but also are strategic and that we're likely to get some interest and take advantage of it. It wouldn't do us any good to have this somewhere that nobody was ever going to want to go. So I'm generally impressed with the recommendations that have been made. But, Council, any other questions or discussions on this item? Chris?
Just a quick question. I'm fine with the tracts that you selected. Have you worked with LISC at all in identifying the tracts?
Actually, Terry Benelli has forwarded some information to us about healthy communities. We did evaluate their recommendations for the whole city. Seven of the tracts are in, we agree with. They're on basically that Main Street corridor. Does not include the two census tracts that run from Stapley to Gilbert along there. And does not include, obviously, the Falcon Field or the Gateway, too. That was based on health factors? Sarah, do you have anything you can add to that?
Correct. So the information that LISC provided us was through the Vitalist Health Foundation. And they actually took a look at all of Arizona's zip codes and ranked, which would be the best to receive this Opportunity Zone designation. But it appears that they focus mostly on health disparities and where healthy communities projects would be appropriate, whereas we took more of a look on economic development potential as well as private investment potential.
Thank you. My recommendation, at least along the light rail corridor, is to work with them in the future to identify opportunities and along with their extensive list of partners and that they can bring to the table along with their financing as well. Thank you.
It is encouraging to note that seven of the areas... Seven of the 12 that you're designating were the ones that LISC identified as being, having, being at risk for health reasons. Is that right?
Correct.
Thank you. Council, any other questions or concern? Is this an action item? Do we need to... Mr., you can just take the consensus?
Yeah, we're just sending this... We're sending it to the governor, so it's our recommendation. So we'll take the council's concurrence. Well, that's what we'll do.
Okay. I think you have our consensus that this is a good strategic use of these 12 and plus one. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is to hear a presentation and discuss the demand for service in the Mesa Fire and Medical Department. Welcome. Good to have our Budget Director, Candace, and...
So there's a couple of staff coming up with me. I'm going to do some introductions. So I am Candace, Candace Charles, Management and Budget Director here in the City of Mesa. And I do want to introduce my team here. So next with me, I have Mark Castleton and Shalay Stedman. And you will see all of the great work that they have put into this and what they have done. And the question is, why are we here? So why are we here this morning? So last year, during the budget process, we talked about staffing models, both for the Police Department and for the Fire and Medical Department. And since that time, this team has been working with the Fire and Medical Staff, Chief Kameli and her great staff over there, at looking at, working on that particular staffing model. And the staffing model starts with understanding what that requirement for demand is for their services. And so over this last, over these last months, we've been working in collaboration to determine and describe the demand for services here in the City of Mesa as it relates to the Fire and Medical Department. I do want to give a real quick background on what we do here in the city because fortunately or unfortunately for these folks, they work behind the scenes most of the time. And so this is not a new thing for them to do. So I wanted to give kind of a quite, just a couple of projects that they've worked on so you can understand the type of work that we do here in the city as it relates to data and data analysis. So these folks here have been with the city for about three, three and a half years. And over that time, what their joel is, is they analyze big historical data sets that we generate throughout the city. So the City of Mesa has a vast amount of assets called data and data sets within our different systems. These folks here work with the departments to identify the data that they have, make sure that it's relevant to the decisions they're trying to make on a daily basis, and how do we get that data out? How do we get it into the hands of those people trying to operate their services on a daily basis? And that's what these guys do. So they create analytical tools to help to deliver those services to the community. So how best can we be effective and efficient with the resources that we have? A couple of projects they've worked on over the last few years has been working with our gas area and looking at 25 years of gas meter test results to make sure that our meters are accurate over time. They've also worked on, with 30 years of vehicle purchases, maintenance, and fuel costs, determine when to retire vehicles. And that was a project that we pulled out, put in place and implemented last year to help us really evaluate the replacement of a vehicle instead of using averages when we do those. And they've also worked with our print shop to determine cost orders and determine the size and the functionality of what our print shop should look like for a city of our size and determine our needs. So just to give you an overview of what they're going to talk about and where this comes from, because when they present it to you, you're going to see that it sounds very intuitive and it sounds very simplified. And so I want to give you a little bit, just a peek behind the scenes on what it takes to pull this together. When they're looking at the quality and sustainability of the department's response model, the first thing we start with is demand. They've been analyzing computer-aided dispatch called CAT here, and electronic patient care reporting, which is also called EPCR. So if you hear us say those. This is data from the last 12 years. It has about 1 million incidences, 2.1 million responses, 7 million lines of medical data, and 113 million lines of tract data. So that's the basis of all of this. And so this morning, what we really want to do, and I'm going to hand it over to Mark, is going to really go through what they found on what the demand looks like over this last 12 years and how it has changed and evolved here in the City of Mesa. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mark.
Good morning. I've been asked to provide a summary of the analysis we've been doing with the Fire Department over the last couple of years. Today, we're going to present to you information about demand for fire and emergency medical services. Demand for fire and emergency medical services emerges from a series of events. We start with people and stuff in trouble. A person who decides to call 911 for help. A call taker who, after a series of questions and answers, categorizes the need, which then triggers a response plan and dispatches the appropriate units. We refer to these activities as the demand side of the sequence and these as the beginning of the response side of the sequence. Our underlying assumption is this. A precise understanding of what drives demand for fire and emergency medical services will lead us to a more effective response to that demand. Today, we will be presenting information about the demand side of the sequence, not the response side. Over the last several months, we have been analyzing data from the Fire Services Dispatch System. From that analysis, we can answer the following questions. What... Or, excuse me, how much demand is there for services? What are the types of demand? Where is the demand? When does the demand occur? And how urgent or severe is the demand? The Fire Service refers to this as acuity. We will talk about each of these in the coming slides. The Fire Service has access to 12 years of data. This chart displays weekly incident counts in Mesa for the last 12 years. It allows us to see the long-term trend in demand for services. In 2006, citizens requested service, on average, 985 times per week. At the bottom of the downturn, weekly incidents dropped to 876 per week. Last year, there was an average of 1,230 incidents per week. Of note, in the final weeks of 2017, the demand on the Fire Service hit an all-time high three weeks in a row, most likely due to the recent outbreak of the flu. To summarize, over the 12-year period starting in 2006, average weekly incident counts increased by 25%. Relative to the low point back in 2008 and '09, or what we refer to as the beginning of the new normal, the average weekly incident count has increased 40%. We segment demand into five general categories. Fire, medical, special operations, which includes demand involving airports, technical rescues, and hazardous materials; service calls, which include things like trouble with animals, ambiguous calls, and miscellaneous situations; and community medicine. Fire and medical are the two dominant types of demand and the primary focus of this presentation, but we will refer to all types. This chart depicts the 12-year history of for-fire-related incidents. Average fire incidents by week have decreased by 35% since 2006. The average weekly count for medical incidents has increased 25% since 2006. Relative to the beginning of the new normal in 2008 and '09, average weekly medical incidents are up 40%. This chart displays the number of fire incidents and medical incidents on the same scale to help us compare the relative change in volume. In 2006, the Fire Service was called out on five and a half incidents for every one fire incident. Did I say that right? Medical incidents, sorry. At the beginning of the new normal, despite the decrease in volume, the ratio stayed about the same at 5.6 to 1. Last year, there were 10.6 medical incidents for every one fire incident. The mix in the type of demand has shifted dramatically over the last 10 to 12 years. This chart depicts the relative mix and shift in demand for all five types of demand. In 2017, medical incidents made up 81% of all calls for service. Fire was 7%. Secondary medical or community medicine was 7%. Service calls were 4%, and special operations were about 1% of all incidents. Demand varies by geography as well as over time. These maps show the change in the frequency and density of fire incidents from 2006 to 2017. Green represents light call volume, or under 25 incidents per year. Yellow or orange represents medium call volume, and red or black represents heavy call volume, or over 250 incidents in that area per year. In general, fire incidents are both less frequent and less dense over the comparison period. However, incident volume is growing along the Guadalupe Corridor of the southeastern panhandle. Demand in the Signal Butte area between Warner and Ray has emerged as well. These maps show the change in the concentration of medical incidents from the new normal in 2008 and '09 to 2017. High-density areas are located on the west side along the University-Broadway corridor east to about Hawes Road. Incident volume is growing along the south of the Guadalupe Corridor of the southeastern panhandle, and demand in the Signal Butte area between Warner and Ray has emerged as well. We are getting better at describing specific features of demand by area of the city. We can analyze demand across the city several different ways. This map divides the city into 33 similar-sized areas. We'll use it to illustrate the unique features of demand by area. Earlier, we mentioned that volume, that incident volume for the city has grown by 40%. In this slide, we'll show an example of two areas in the city and how their respective incident volume and growth rates differ. These charts compare incident volume and growth rates of Area A and Area B. The gray bars are the number of incidents by year. The orange line is the incident growth, incident growth rate since 2006. Area A currently has about eight times the incident volume as Area B. But Area B has about eight times the growth rate as Area A. The implication is important. We can measure with precision and speed how fast demand is changing in different areas and neighborhoods of the city. In this example, if demand in Area B continues to grow at this rate, Area B will have more calls than Area A within about 20 years. We studied how demand changes across seasons of the year. This chart shows the 12-year average weekly call counts by each of the 52 weeks of the year. It allows us to see variations by season of the year, winter, spring, summer, and fall. In Area C, the orange seasonal trend line hovers closely to the gray annual average line, meaning there is almost no seasonal effect. Whereas Area D has high seasonal effect. Springtime demand in Area D is 18% more than the annual weekly average.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Can you tell me where Areas A, B, and C are at?
We were trying to... We're trying to keep them on the exam...
We were trying to, we're trying to keep them on the examples of how there's different, there's differences between the different areas. Yes.
Area A, if I recall correctly, is around Greenfield and southern, but that trend is similar in about five or six other areas of the city. Area B is in the southeastern Panhandle. There's about seven areas that have extremely high growth rate over the last 12 years.
So Councilman Thompson, we can now say we live in the Panhandle. I hadn't thought of that before. The Mesa Panhandle.
So the point of A, B, and C is just illustrative. You're just showing us how you're...
We could have picked any one of several areas. It was just to show you they're very different.
Yeah, Mayor, this is, this is just to, we didn't want to, we wanted to show the differences in the data, which is the differences in the demand that's being requested within those areas.
So you're showing us how the data analysis works, not telling us, yeah, okay.
That is not uniform. There can, there's changes between one area and another area in the demand. So what the demand is for that area may differ depending on where it is.
Thank you.
Springtime in area, springtime demand in Area D is 18% more than the annual weekly average, while demand in the summer weeks is 17% below the average. So in this area of the city, there is a 35% swing in call volume every six months. This chart shows volume for all 24 hours of the day. 64% of incidents occur during the daytime 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM period. In other words, twice as many calls for service come during the day as at night. This pattern of demand is highly stable throughout the 12 years of our data sets, the five demand categories, and in all 33 areas of the city.
This pattern, finding a pattern like this is kind of what, this is kind of the treasure that we look for in this data analysis, finding patterns. This time of the day is very relevant and something significant that we need to look at as we begin to look at staffing models and recognizing there's this kind of set pattern as far as the demand.
Mr. Luna.
I have a question related to that. Are most of these high-demand calls related to assisted-living and retirement communities? Are you able to disaggregate that data to tell, to...
So, Mayor and Vice Mayor Luna, the data that they have access to is all of the data for all of the calls. At this point in the discovery period, which this is what this point in this project is, is discovery, is telling us what the data says, we did not go down to the type of facility. The information is available, but at this point, we were looking for trends in the calls for service itself. So what type of call was it for rather than the actual type of facility that was calling? But we, but we do know the areas of those, yes. Yes. So, yes, all that data is available. It's just, we were trying to keep it at a much higher level to see uniformity and trending by area and location and time and seasonality and so forth.
But you can ascertain that based on geography as well?
Yes, yes, we have all of that information.
Well, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I heard a statistic a year or so ago that 19 of our 20 most, pot-most called-upon areas for service were assisted-living facilities? Am I getting that roughly correct?
Yeah, that's...
Okay.
That was part of that, yes, we looked through that, and I think that was part of when we threw fees and charges and we were talking about all the different types of things that we could do. But yes, we do have, we have, all of that information is there. We can see the frequent flyers by address, by type of facility. Any information that we have gathered as, or that the department has gathered as part of their call is all available to us to do that. And so that is one of the pieces. Again, the presentation this morning is to try to keep it at like that kind of a higher level demand, but understand that all of that information is available as we start looking for what to do and how to respond. And that's not part of this morning. This morning is kind of, is describing what the demand is, and that would be the next part, right? The next part is how to respond to the demand that we're, that the department is receiving.
The urgency or severity of an incident is commonly referred to as acuity, to as acuity, and is the final facet of demand we'll look at today. There are four subcategories of medical calls. We'll look at the acuity of each of the four subcategories. Complex medical calls include calls like chest pain, stroke, and drowning. MVA refers to motor vehicle accidents involving pedestrians, bikes, or motorcycles. ALS stands for advanced life support and includes serious falls, seizures, and loss of consciousness. And BLS refers to basic life support, which covers other minor injuries and ailments. Our measures of incident acuity are a work in progress. As of now, we are using a scale of 1 to 5, where 5 is high acuity and 1 is low acuity or near-normal health. Our analysis of the data shows that acuity varies by call category. Let me highlight a few areas of interest. The fire service generally expects a high percentage of complex calls to have high acuity. However, 50% of these incidents actually rate at low-acuity levels 1 or 2. Here's a relatively common example of this situation. A person calls and complains of chest pain, a potentially high-acuity problem. The paramedics arrive on scene, diagnose the problem, and determine it is not a heart attack, but rather indigestion or an anxiety attack, both of which are low-acuity problems. On the other side of the spectrum, the fire service generally expects a low percentage of BLS calls to have high acuity. Nevertheless, 8% or about 1 in 12 BLS calls are actually high-acuity problems with acuity level of 4 or 5. This might be the case when somebody calls for what appears to be a minor fall. When the paramedics arrive on scene, they determine that the fall was a result of a stroke, a high-acuity problem that requires immediate transport to the hospital. The implication is important. The acuity of a call for service is difficult to determine from information during the 911 phone call. The real acuity generally does not become clear until after experts are on the scene, well into the response side of the event sequence. That concludes our description of the community's demand for medical services from Mesa's Fire Medical Department. We looked at how demand is changing, both in volume and type. We saw how it varies by area of the city, time of day, season of the year, and acuity level. Perhaps the most important takeaway from today is this: Our ability to describe demand with precision is improving. At the same time, we are learning what is causing demand to change. This is the primary factor in our ability to anticipate demand and to improve how we respond when someone calls for help. Improving our response is a good thing for our community and is the ultimate goal of all of our efforts. Can we answer any questions for you?
So, Mayor and Council, again, this is, the purpose of this morning's presentation is to show you where we are progressing in this particular project. The most important thing we can do before we actually tackle the response or coming up with a response plan as a city is to understand what the demand is and the demand for services, how they're changing, how they've evolved, and how they are going to change in those areas that are high-growth areas. And so what are the next steps from here and where will we go from here now that we have this information and we have an understanding of what the demand is in the city? Going from that, once we had the demand, didn't stop the project. That's not where the project stopped. That's actually the step one of the project. The project has continued to work with all of the stakeholders, all of the experts within the Fire and Medical Department at all various levels, working on what is our current and looking at what our current response is. How are we responding? How could we respond? How does knowing the demand that we have give us opportunities to look and to be more effective and efficient and sustainable while providing quality services? How do we keep and increase our quality and make our services also sustainable into the future? So that's really the goal of the project overall. So again, this is step one. We're going to continue to define the demand and review various response scenarios with the goal of coming back to Mayor and Council with counsel, with recommendations on how we would approach a staffing model that would apply to the demands that they're currently seeing, that's also sustainable into the future to make sure we can provide that quality service to all of residents in Mesa who are here or not here yet in those growth areas.
So Mayor and Council, this is unique to have this capability. Until you have an opportunity to sit in the room with Mark and Chalet and have multiple screens in front of you and spreadsheets, you don't, it's hard to appreciate the volume of data that's coming into this presentation, but it's very helpful. I think it's been very educational for me as well as the fire department, and we appreciate the fire department's really participation, not only obviously from the chief, but well down into the rank and file. I think Mark's gone out on with all levels of the organization to kind of work with them on this modeling process, and they've been very receptive and very insightful about the information. But I think what helps us is instead of making decisions based on past practices or anecdotal information, now we have data and we have big data that we're now able to pull together to make some decisions. So we're looking forward to coming back to Council with helping, now taking this model and using it to help predict kind of where we need to put our response model. It's obvious things have changed. There's no doubt. You can see that's the dynamic in this presentation, that the world in which the, we have our firefighters or medical officers involved in this, has changed significantly in a pretty relatively short period of time. And so it's putting a new, different kind of demand and requirement on them and how we respond, I, we think is going to probably have to change from the old model we had before. And, and as you know, the fire chief and with her staff has been looking at different models to address some of these. But I think now with these, this analysis, we can actually measure the success of these models and determine the, and have specific key performance measures to determine what makes the significant difference in being able to address these concerns. So we just wanted to kind of set the, I guess, the framework for where we are and to show you where we are today, and then as we come back, then we can start talking more about the response models.
Thank you. I know Mr. Freeman has a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Brady and Candace, Mark for your presentation. I was just curious the, how the statistics relate to the population growth in certain areas of the community for the incident growth versus the population growth. So, in other words, so we can predict where we need to place our public safety structures at, our buildings at. So if we're predicting these zones like the Panhandle of Mesa, then we can, we can then say, hey, we need to build out a fire station or a police station in these areas. So that's, that's my concern, is how we develop these programs so that we can prove to our, our population, our growth here, that we're cognizant, we're going to move forward. And so I, these statistics are extremely important so as to evaluate that and maybe perhaps change our delivery model and how we do that. So that would be my, my thought was, how could we have the population growth over here compared to the incidents and how they're growing or decreasing in certain areas? And I appreciate the one with the seasonal swing, 35% on call areas, and I could pretty much guess where that might be, but regardless, that's an important factor on how we can move trucks and equipment around.
Right, and then to the point that says, you know, there are times of the year where we actually, we need to be more mobile and be able to place resources where they're needed because of those kinds of changes in seasonality and even times of the day. You can see that there are definite patterns of times of the day and where we might be able to allocate resources, because at the end of the day, the response model is response time, and so we want to address both of those.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Ready.
Just a quick question, maybe the chief can answer this. What is the difference between medical and the medical secondary, the community medical calls? What's that, what's that difference of incidents?
The secondary medical calls is with our CM units. That's our community medicine units. That's the, it's more of an advanced care in terms of, we have a nurse practitioner on a two-person unit and a behavioral health person on a two-person unit. They kind of handle calls that are the low-acuity but in between an ALS and a BLS. It's a very specific call type, and that's what we worked off of our $12 million grant that's coming to an end.
And then the other one, I'm assuming, you know, data is great to identify these trends and we can hone in into some of the, the trends that kind of highlighted here. I imagine that we're getting context to some of these things as far as demand has, the slide on demand has different levels of acuity. The, the call might have been received, like you mentioned, as a stroke or a heart attack, but during the response time, through response, it was categorized differently. Is that, is that in the data, like, change or is that because of context provided by the firefighters or staff?
So Mayor and Councilmember, or Hedia, what we can see in the data is we can see how the calls were dispatched, and that's going to be from the, from the call taker and the information that they're able to get from the 911 call. But then we can also see how the call from the firefighters who are actually there on scene, and then we get the information from them on what it really was. And so we're able to see that, that's again, that's in the data of showing us kind of the before and the after and how many times, you know, what is the acuity when it's dispatched versus what is the acuity that they feel when they actually get there and are able to assess the patient because they're on seat, on site.
It's another data point.
It's another data point. There are actually multiple data points that we actually triangulate to see what exactly is going on with the call, because that's all part of the process. The 911 call, the assessment during the 911 call, the dispatch, the assessment on scene and everything. So it's a continuous process, and so we want to make sure that we have the data available for all points on that process. And they've been working, they've been pretty much embedded with the fire department, this fire and medical department with this whole time, and also to be able to get their feedback on what they're seeing in the field, how it's being dispatched versus what they're seeing in the field, so we can kind of take a look at that part of the process as well.
I'd like to add to that. Something that's important on emergency dispatch, though, is we can never respond based on after the fact, because we only know what is dispatched. So when we send units out there, it's based on what the dispatch is because we don't know how it's going to end up until we get their legmark explained. Sometimes it turns out differently than what we thought on the initial dispatch, so it's important that we do that.
Jeremy.
I just want to say I love what you guys are doing with the data. I think it's excellent to provide this model of analysis to be able to respond to it. The one thing that I would ask, and I don't know if this is something that you guys are already doing, is that if we can use this to actually build a framework, right? So that as the data is input in the system, all of these graphs that we have are in some form of a dashboard automatically updating right up to present date rather than just doing a one-time analysis.
And Mayor, yeah, Mayor and Councilmember, what occurred, that's exactly where we're going with this. This is not a point-in-time project. This isn't just a point-in-time where we're going to do it one time and take a look. They are actually building the models, working with both these excellent skills that we have sitting here at the table as well as the skills within our IT department and working collaboratively within all three departments to put that modeling together. So it's truly an up-to-the-minute model. They can update it anytime with the calls that happened this morning and see what's going on and how it affects those, and then working into that modeling as well. And that's the area that we're trying to add into is the, what Councilmember Freeman regarded was projecting, right? So we can see that things are growing, and that's where we'll then start working with our planning department and permits and so forth. If we, when we start projecting population and the demographics of that population, will also help us to project the possible demand for services in that area as well. And so that's really, that's the point we're working on right now.
I just want to say I love what you guys are doing, so this is excellent.
Thank you. Let me, let me add to, thank you for being data-driven. I assume this has something to do with our participation in What Works Cities and the Bloomberg Initiative encouraging us to be more data-driven, so that's, it's great to see that it's having real, real implications in the way that we're doing things. I assume also the next step of this, you know, the recommendations that are come as to, this is great information, it's great to see how it works, but turning it into practical things that we can base our budgetary decisions on, I assume the next step is going to occur at or before that process?
Yes, during that process, I think we'll be bringing that back to you, Mayor, yes.
Okay, great. And obviously, the number crunchers are great, but we're also going to have our chiefs say we agree or we disagree with the way the numbers...
Right, and Mayor, I just want to make that really clear that, yeah, it's a collaborative effort. None of these types of projects can be done by people sitting at a computer. This is a collaborative effort with the department. They've done, they've been out doing the ride-alongs, they've talked with the people in the field, they've talked with their, with the dispatch about how it's dispatched, what they look for, what are the types of codes. They're in conversation with the medical, with the doctor as well that oversees the quality, quality of care and so forth. So this is, this is truly what we'd say is a full, wise-city collaborative effort, that everyone involved in this process is integral to the success of the project.
And Mayor, no other department right now has this access to this kind of talent and these tools right now to do this kind of analysis. So I think the chief and her staff have been very much involved because they recognize that now that this is something that a lot of departments just don't have, to have this kind of access to data and be able to crunch it and help them in their decision-making. So, and I was also talking to the chief yesterday, they're already kind of looking ahead and implementing some of these ideas already where they can see areas where the medical is so significant. And what happens is the consequence of having... And what happens is the consequence of having these high medical calls and the density of high medical calls, it means that you have firefighters and fire stations on fire trucks that are spending most of their time away from their station, going to medical calls, and when the fire call comes in for their area, they're not available to fight the fire. So that means some, another unit has to come in from a different location to be there. So that's all part of the response model that we'll be bringing back to Council.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman, and then Jeremy.
Thank you, Mr. Brady, for your comments. You know, along with my comments about predictability, I think that, along with response time, I just don't want us to be behind the game in building out these public safety buildings. In other words, the timestamp it takes to build a fire station, for example, could be a year, you know, or less, but let's say a year, roughly.
Oh, yeah, easily. Well, assuming we have the land.
Well, I don't know, in some areas, we do have the land.
Right, no, I'm just saying, if we have the land.
But if we have the land.
We don't have the land, it's even longer.
So we should be pulling those plans off the shelf and maybe looking forward to building out these. These are some of the things we'll talk in our strategic planning session, because if we're going to be responsive in our response times to our people in our community, we need to be responsive, again, in building our buildings. And that's what I'm advocating, is that we look hard at that, and if we're funding our ASU projects, then we look at these other projects that we can fund and get them built out. Monies are available, I know in Kevin Thompson's district, about billion to billion, get it partially built. The manpower is the other component, which I know, but I'd rather have a building sitting there that if mobility issues arise, that we could move fire trucks or CMU units around, we could do that, based on population growth and incident demand. So that's, I guess that's one of my comments, is about being proactive with this information and getting these buildings built.
Thank you.
One last thing that I just wanted to point out was I met with one of the, somebody in IT over at the City of Phoenix, and one of the things that they had stressed would be that it would be great if we had a data scientist, like some form of co-op or something between cities where we have data scientists coming in and analyzing.
That's who we have here at the, these are our data scientists.
Gotcha, okay. That was just one of the feedback that I got from Phoenix, was that they don't have access to data scientists and that they would find that extremely valuable if they...
And we have.
And Mayor Councilmember Whitaker, that's exactly what we're saying. We have a unique opportunity right now that we actually do have access to a couple data scientists, and, and what we're looking at is how do we make sure that, that we can grow that type of talent and have access to that talent in the future as well.
It is key, it is key, absolutely.
Mr. Ready.
Question on quali, you mentioned quality. How are we capturing quality of the service? A lot of these data points are kind of responding, data points, right? But the quality piece, are we capturing some quality kind of metrics on that? Is that internal, or are we asking the folks that we, we served, or how's that, how's those datas?
Are you referring to the quality of the data or the quality of the intervention?
Of the intervention.
Okay, yes, I can answer that. Councilmember Ready and Mayor Council. So we do a Q and A process on all of our calls. Any medical call, we do a Q and A process in terms of looking at the call, seeing if we handle the call appropriately. That we do on a regular basis. Same thing on fire calls, we do critiques on each one of our incidents, either on scene and bigger incidents, we do as group settings. So we do our own QA on a regular basis.
With the person that called, and then do you capture that information, or?
Well, we do it with the providers on the scene, with our medics and EMTs on scene. We do the QA with them, and if needed, with the hospital, and sometimes with the patient if that calls for that as well. If I could, Mayor, may I?
Please, yes.
I would like to add, it really is important, we have been working together on the data, which is really, really critical. We know that as we move forward and what we come up with, we have to take all of the data together before we make some critical decisions in emergency response. Data is so important as we move forward, but something that's really, really important also is that we maintain, we have to have firefighters per thousand in our community today, and we know that you absolutely need to have firefighters strategically placed across the city. Our goal in the city is to get within a call within four to six minutes. That was determined for a couple of reasons. Brain cells start to die without oxygen within four to six minutes, fire doubles in size every one to two minutes. So to have our units strategically placed across the city as we come up with our staffing model is so important. Where we are today in firefighter per thousand is .83, and this is just firefighters, .83. During the seasonal time, when we have winter visitors, that goes down to .74 firefighters per thousand. Just a little bit of history, so as we move forward and we make decisions, a little bit of history is, years ago, firefighters just had the firefighting skill, they didn't have any medical components added to that. Over the years, I've been here 34 years, and over the years, we were able to have two EMTs and two paramedics on every truck. We evolved into that, and this is what we do in the Valley, and it's so critical because we can get to, our goal is anywhere in the city, we're not accomplishing that today because we're low and there are certain parts of the city we can't get to, as Mark alluded to. But the goal is to maintain that level of care, and we have, as Mr. Brady stated, we have been very innovative to date, and I have to say Mesa is on the cutting edge of innovation in terms of LA units and CM units, they're, they're not doing any, I mean, people are starting to do LA units today, but with the support of the Council and city management, seven years ago Mesa started transitioning to what we called at that time was a TRV. Today it's called an LA, and now it's universal in the Valley, more and more departments are doing this. So with your support, we have been able to really try and get the right resource to the right call, and that is so important. But also, we have to maintain our four-person response to get to anywhere in the city, even though when you look at the number of fires, there's also a gas call, there's also alarm sound, there's all these other types of services that would need a four-person response. It's critical that we don't reduce our service in terms of our public. I think people want to live where they feel safe, both with police and fire, and we are all about maintaining a level of service that we think our community deserves. We have an automatic gate system that we go out of our city 5,000 times, and about 5,000 times a year Gilbert, Tempe, they come into Mesa as well. So we have to have, and what we've just signed an automatic agreement with these communities, saying we will have a high level of care when we go into your city, because we expect that of you when you come into our city, when you treat our citizens. So to maintain that level of care, the data, so we agree with every bit of data in terms of trying to send the right resource to the right call, but with that, we still have to maintain a level of service that doesn't degrade the quality of service we provide. Phoenix just had an article, they're trying to reach one firefighter per thousand, and hopefully someday we, we reach that. But having that medical component attached to us is really what gives us that highest quality of service to our community.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. We look forward to having both the chief and our data scientists back as we work our way through this. Any other questions or concerns? Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is to, oh, I apologize, earlier, the gentleman filed a blue card to speak on Agenda Item 2A, that was the allocation of the Opportunity Zone designations. He was in favor of it, but he did, which is, I think, the consensus that we, we came away with, but I wanted to give him the opportunity to speak if he is still here. Mr. David Martins? Oh, I apologize, yeah, I'll apologize, Mr. Martins, later, but he was in favor of it, so I think the, he's probably pleased with the outcome of our meeting. Yes, Mr. Thompson.
Real quick, Chris reminded me, and I totally blanked it out. Item 8A and 8B, I do need to pull those from the agenda, because I do have a conflict of interest, and will need to recuse myself from that.
Okay.
We'll take care of that.
Okay, thank you. 8A and 8B. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is acknowledge receipts of minutes of various boards and committees. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Thank you, Mr. Glover. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is information pertaining to the current job order contracting projects. Council, any questions with any of those projects? Seeing none, the next is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Anything you'd like to report, Council? If not, Mr. Brady, what is our schedule for future meetings?
Yes, Mayor, just a reminder, our next council meeting will be Monday, February 26. Also a reminder that the Mesa-Phoenix Marathon is this Saturday from 5:00 AM to 2:00 PM. It'll be throughout Mesa, and we also have opening day for spring training in Mesa, Oakland A's this Friday, the 23rd, and the Cubs will be Saturday, the 24th.
Jeremy.
Just have one thing that I want to point out, you guys did an excellent job at putting that Google map, I think you guys did that, the Google map that shows all the road closures, so. Yeah, if anybody hasn't seen that, if you can share that, like, on social media, so that people know, like, what routes to, what, because I know we got a ton of emails last year from how much people loved driving out to Kevin Thompson's district just to go to Dobson.
And we're going to be doing live, we're going to be taking, working on that, a live kind of social media interaction on the day of the race also.
Okay, so just to say amen to that, there's, is there a Google app, a Google map app that we can send people to saying, hey, if you want to get from point A to point B on Saturday morning, here's how you do it?
Yeah, it's on our social media site, so if you go to City of Mesa, Arizona Government, so on our social media sites, we've been pushing out that interactive map, so, yep.
Great. All right, so just again, to warn people, Saturday morning from 5:00 AM to 2:00 PM, a lot of the streets in Mesa are going to be closed down due to the marathon, so please plan ahead. All right, Mr. Freeman.
Why don't we just buy all Cubs and A's tickets?
Well, that afternoon, everybody should go to the Cubs and A's games, that's true, that would be a great way to...
He goes right by the A's, he can't get in.
All right, if there's nothing else, is there a motion adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? We are adjourned.
Is your farm right by A?